...meetings.
None at this time?
Special events applications, Lysia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application is from Main Street farmers. They would like to do their market. We actually started on May 27th and will run through October 28th in Firement's Park. Next is V and A seeking to do a summer safety car seat insulation at Springwood Park on June 29th. Asbury Park Family Day at the Beach would like to do their surfing event on Saturday, August the 5th. A day of worship is seeking to do a Christian music festival in Sunset Park on September 2nd. And lastly, there's a wedding on August 20th on Fifth Avenue Beach at 6:30.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question about the day of worship.
Yes.
Labor Day weekend, right?
Yes.
So there will not be any street closings, correct?
They are not requesting any street closings at this time.
They applied to have it in Bradley Park and we said absolutely not.
Okay.
And suggested if you want to have it that weekend because of either commitments to artists or advertising to only places possible, Sunset Park.
Okay.
Because the beachfront's just too crowded.
And so there won't be any street closings on that weekend?
The only, they didn't ask for it. I think the numbers they first presented were a lot larger. He's dropped his numbers down.
Correct, right.
The only street closing would be if need be Bond Street between Fifth and Sunset.
Okay, alright.
That would be the only street closing.
Okay.
And he hasn't requested that yet.
No, not yet, no.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Lysia, is there still going to be an affair at the park on Fifth Avenue or Sunset Avenue?
Uh, when?
The 27th for June.
The, I'm sorry?
The 27th for this month.
Twenty-seventh?
I think it's in an...
Do you know the name of the event?
I think Mr. Ross was at, Mr. Ross has something to do with it?
That is to be determined at this point.
Oh, that's what I wanted to hear, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to presentations. We have a presentation for requested plan amendment for 512 Summerfield Avenue.
Andrew Karras from the firm Fox Rothschild, behalf of Shared Equities Company LLC. What we're here for tonight is initial presentation with regard to a plan amendment with regard to property. Just give a little background, and I'll have two witnesses testify. Property at 512 Summerfield Avenue, Block 3101, Lot 3. Presenting existing parking lots, a vacant parking lot, a lot. What we're proposing is a 12-unit multifamily residential dwelling located in a CBD mixed-use zone. The unique about this particular property, the reason why we're asking for the plan amendment, is that when you look down the street, it's kind of a split street. On one side you have CBD, across the street you have a residential zone. When you go through the entire street, the entire streetscape, you see it's the Orwin Zone on the other side. It's mostly residential. The CBD though does not allow for ground to be residential. What we are proposing is to put apartments on the ground floor for this particular property. That being said, on the call, Mr. Garbala, testifying has been here before, in fact, before, from the planning boards and the zoning boards, who are related to the plan amendment. Jose, can you go through the plans?
Uh, certainly. Good evening, Jose, good morning, your architectural project. This is parking lot that is a 30 by 100 piece property in front on Summerfield. And we're planning on putting on it is a four-story building, three levels of units, with the top floor being a duplex level. We have four units, four studios, four studios and four two-bedroom units on the top.
Wait, slow, uh, I'm sorry, one, slow down. And two, can you go through the bedrooms again? It's studio, studio, one bedroom?
The, the, the four units, maybe we should go over the plans just to show it to them. This is the basement plan, first floor plan, this is the entrance. We have one, two, three, four units on that first floor. They're all studio units.
Okay.
We don't have any bedrooms on the first floor. They are duplex units that go down into the lower level with a recreation area. Most of the lower level is utilities and, you know, all the building uses, obviously necessary to run the building. The second floor has again, one, two, three, four more units, and these are all studio units. There are no windows on the side, just windows in the front and back. And that's the eight studio units that I just mentioned. The third floor has again, one, two, three, four units. These units are duplexes having a dining and, you know, more open areas on the first floor, and then two bedrooms on the second floor. And that's what constitutes the other project.
And what's the square footage for the studio, studios?
Studio units ranging from 700 and, from almost 800 square feet, I'm sorry, from 600 to by 1100 square feet.
Okay.
You're familiar with the area, you did an examination of the area, and compared your plans and designs of the building, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
What we're proposing is residential units on the ground floor, am I correct?
That, that is correct.
And that is not permitted in CBD zone, am I correct?
That is also correct.
And that's the reason that we're requesting a plan amendment, correct?
That is right.
Looking at the entire streetscape, the entire area, that being conformed with the surrounding area and existing usage up and down Summerfield Avenue.
Again, there's uses that are only residential, there's uses that have retail on the first floor. So you can see here the building next to it, it's only residential, the building next to it, next level, the next one down, it has retail. And that's the mix that happens up and down Summerfield Avenue.
That's on, that's on the southern part of the street. On the northern part of the street, there's basically no retail, am I correct?
That is correct.
For the most part, it's residential.
Mostly residential, correct. Residential.
But the rest up Summerfield past the parking garage is also retail?
On which side of the street?
On the side you're proposing the...
Yeah, on this side, correct. But I'm talking, on the northern side it's all residential.
Right, but generally if you put the two sides of the street together, take it as an harmony, yes, it has a mix of non-residential and residential utilities.
And, and the parking garage, is that correct?
And right, and the parking garage is what makes it, you're right.
No, it's up the street.
It's one, up a block.
A little west, right.
That, that's also parking for, yeah, for the utility, right?
So that, that's parking for the units?
No, no, this is parking for the utility company, that's next door to it.
Okay, and what about parking for the units?
We're now proposing parking with this building at this point.
We'll be paying into the fund as permitted by statute for the, this particular property. If we were to put commercial on the bottom, it would be a sense of more attention, so we could put commercial there. Do the same type of building, the commercial on the bottom also have no parking, but it would actually be more intensive use in terms of parking requirements for the site. We're doing residential, which is less intensive use, would require essentially less parking to utilize the site. Keep in mind though that, that site is going to be filled up with facilities.
I just want to say we're going to provide parking either with the fund or off-site on the other side.
Which brings up the other issue which Mr. Sappan can address in terms of parking also.
Yeah, so my, our goal is, is to, as we've discussed with the city in the past, is to provide a parking facility at 607 Madison. A multi-level parking facility. We've explored that, we've had a design, we've presented it, I think it's with the city's consultants right now, and we're looking for feedback on that presently. That's a design for upwards of 640 spaces in the central business district, which is approximately about a block away from the site.
We're looking to move, obviously, that project, um, if we can get...
Are you talking about the food shop, the food store site that you were, that you proposed?
So 707 Madison is adjacent to the Asbury Park Press Building?
Yep.
Right, but you propose, is it the one that has the food store?
It had, we, we had, well, in the concept plan, we had proposed a grocer on the ground floor.
And so now you're saying you're going to have parking there for this building?
Well, I'm saying I'll have ample parking for a lot of sites in the central business district if I hit 640. And that design, that concept design included above the proposed grocer, a transfer deck with an automated parking system.
And now there's good parking for public use also.
That's my goal, is that I'll have, certainly I'll have excess parking for the sites that I'm looking to develop in the central business district. And this would also help with the demand, the excess demand that we're experiencing in the district today.
So that's 607?
607 Madison.
And that plan is still alive?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's with your consultant right now. I'm waiting to hear back from your consult, the city's consultant.
Who's our consultant?
NW, you asked the NW to review the pro forma. I have a call with them tomorrow afternoon.
To what?
You asked NW to review their pro forma, make sure the map works, and I have a call with NW tomorrow.
I thought we fired NW.
I'm sorry, vacation.
I wonder we're all confused.
I was like, oh, okay, thank you.
There's some additional information they had requested of us, so we have been going back and forth with the nation, which they do have.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
All right.
There's no question that parking is a huge issue here in the city, especially in the downtown. That 607 plan addresses a lot of concerns, provides for a lot of parking, if we get that building going and built.
So, look, just my two cents. I like the flow of retail, right? So I like how you have purple glaze, you have the tattoo shop, then you, you go into the hair salon or the nail place, you go down the corner to the bank. My preference is, is to keep at least that side of the street as much retail as we can. I get what you're saying about the intense, I totally understand what you're saying about parking. But, you know, my position is just maintaining a vibrant downtown retail helps us.
I just, you know, I would just say also, not, not in addition to the parking, so it's less of an impact on parking, I would just say as a, as a landlord in the district that certainly retail, I would say, is on a proportionate basis with what we have in the, in the city. It's, it's a little tougher to fill.
To fill the space.
Tougher economic struggle to fit retail in some of the outlying areas, let alone, you know, here. But even the main thoroughfares I would consider like Bangs Avenue and Cookman to be a higher demand corridor than Summerfield.
Being familiar with the street, that, that's a tough street for retail, there's not a lot of foot traffic.
That's because of the lack of daily foot traffic?
Yeah, it's foot traffic, I would say. I mean, let's, I mean, listen, the downtown has kind of identified itself as anchored by a lot of the restaurants that are there. There's more immediate traffic centered around those. This is kind of like on the perimeter. It doesn't get to visibility that, that a lot of the other, you know, inner line corridors like Bangs and, and Cookman receive. And like for that matter, it's been quite a while, I think that's also...
It's a lot going on, I'm like... In addition, not only the foot traffic, but when you see the car traffic coming up and down, there's, there's some of the car traffic. But you don't, you know, for a retail store in that particular location, it's a tough place. Because you're not having a lot of people walking by, and not a lot of people driving by to see those stores and to actually then take, make use of those, any retail on that side of the street. It's a tough street for retail.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
All right, so by way of process, if the council is interested in pursuing this, you would have to pass a resolution to send this over to the planning board because as Mr. Karras indicated, it would involve a plan amendment to the CBD, and that would go over to...
To put residential on the first floor, right?
Yes, to put the residential on the first floor, because right now that's not permitted in the CBD. And then planning board would provide their review and comments, and you would potentially move forward with an ordinance to amend the CBD plan accordingly.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, which was for 700 Bangs Avenue, will be rescheduled. Now we're up to review of agenda items for this evening's meeting.
Excuse me. Resolution 27186 is a special events application. Resolution 187 is a resolution making application to the local finance board. As a qualified bond act municipality, as we concede transitional aid, anytime we offer any sort of debt or capital ordinances, the local finance board in Trenton has to sign off on it. Tonight there's for, proposed three ordinances for introduction involving debt. This authorizes us to go before the local finance board. Resolutions 188 and 194 is a disposition of surplus property. 188 is items that we are going to try to auction off, mostly vehicles. And 194 is getting rid of throwing out property that has no value. These are broken printers, broken monitors, old computers that don't work, old phones that don't work, and have no, no value whatsoever to them. Resolution 190 is a standard resolution, it's done every year, authorizing the tonnage grant. They're always a year behind, so don't worry about the 2016 date. 192 is releasing a performance bond for 205 and 209 Main Street. Again, as you've seen, these have become standard as we move along with redevelopment projects. Moving on to individual resolutions, 196 is amending the temporary budget appropriations for 2017. We are at the end of the second quarter for June, so now it's an amendment of the temporary budget going over the 26.25 percent that's authorized under the fiscal affairs law. 197 is payment of bills. 198 is liquor license.
Can we go back a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I skipped one. Go ahead.
The 191, the 192, the 193, which I talked to you about, and...
191 has been removed. If you look in your new agenda, it has been removed, and 193 has been removed because it was a duplicate, same as 192.
Why was 191 removed?
Because it was not ready to be released yet.
There's a standing bill. So we're not going to let the bond re-release until everyone's paid.
Okay, and so I'll ask the question, so I don't have to ask them next time, and maybe it applies to the one that wasn't removed. As much as the engineer is saying they've completed everything, does that include paying into the parking fund?
Yes, one applicant that's been removed, and I'll get the exact one, did not have to pay, and then the one that did has paid it to the front.
Okay.
I try you. You're welcome. 195, I skipped by accident, sorry about that, is rejecting the request for the proposals for the turf club soil removal project. This is the application, this is the project that DEP will fund us at 75 percent as part of Interface Turf Club project. The bids have to be rejected because the consultant, quite honestly, screwed up and put them due after a holiday, which violates state law. So we're going out to bid again, but we have to reject them for violation of the law. 199 establishes the members of the mayor's wellness committee, which the members will be read during the regular meeting. Resolution 200 is appointing a member to the housing authority, which the member will be read during the regular meeting. Resolution 201 is terminating the contract with Munichap for financial advising services. They're the ones that are currently doing the billing associated with I-STAR project. Resolution 202 is the purchase of a four-wheel vehicle for the police department. This is so that they can have a better presence on the beach and respond to emergencies faster. Resolution 203 authorizing an agreement for financial and administrative services, which is the company, Lurch, Vincent, Higgins, to replace Munichap. Myself, Mr. Shripka, Mr. Laventhal, Mr. Perlman from I-STAR, who's their bond attorney. Representatives from McMenamin and Scotland, Acacia, and Bond Council have all been involved in this process, and we're all recommending the termination of Munichap's contract and the hiring of Lurch, Vincent, Higgins to provide these services. Resolution 204 is design services and project management and construction management for, that really should be for sanitary sewer and the road program for Heck Street. The city has received a 237,000 DOT grant for the repaving and reconstruction of Heck Street, which is later is an introduced ordinance. Resolution 205 is for T and M to prepare the municipal access plan for the city of Asbury Park. The public access plan, or the PAP as you'll hear commonly referred to, is a requirement for the DEP for cleaning the beach. We've been auditing our permits with DEP. DEP has been doing this across New Jersey, and it has found that we actually don't have the individual permit to do maintenance on the beach, cleaning, raking, planting grass. We don't have that permit. The last record DEP has was it looks like eight or nine years ago. It was, it was in the city's possession. This corrects it. This plan is going to cost approximately $23,000 to do. If we do it, then the plan, the permit is an individual permit under DEP rules, and it's a thousand dollars. If we don't do this plan every year, it's a $30,000 caper permit. So obviously, it's much more cost effective to do this. It's done once, we're done. It needs to be added as an element to the master plan, so we're recommending that you, the council approve this tonight, and then tomorrow I'll reach out to the planning board and say, we need three members to be on a little subcommittee. I'm going to take the lead on this. T and M thinks they will have this done pretty quickly, but it is, it's labor intensive, but it needs to get done in order to save us a lot of money over the long run. Resolution 206 is an execution of a right-of-way use agreement between the city of Asbury Park and Verizon. Verizon has come to us and one other municipality to provide free Wi-Fi services in a pilot program. They are proposing free Wi-Fi along the Springwood Avenue corridor up to Kula Cafe and the central business district. There is no cost to the city. They're going to be putting wireless access points, Wi-Fi access points on various poles. The map isn't finalized yet. They're hopeful to have this done sooner than later, but this will be free Wi-Fi for any visitors along Springwood Avenue corridor and the central business district.
I think it's really exciting.
It, it's, it's more than really exciting, and it just happened very quickly last...
Thursday, Friday.
That's Thursday, Friday, and they want to start right away, and they want to get it done right away. And they didn't want a lot of advertisement about it because, but it is a part of the program. They wanted to do our beachfront, our beachfront was already done, and so they said, how about downtown? And they stopped on the other side of the railroad tracks, and we said, how about extending it to Springwood Avenue Park? And they said, no problem. So it was a great meeting, and they didn't have to do that, but they did do that, and they understood why. So it, it reaches to the park for all the concerts, and it reaches to the new buildings, be it Michael's and everything. Thank you, Verizon. It is outstanding.
And when will this be installed? How, how long before?
They, they gave us a date, but their date is probably not realistic due to JCP and L and some electrical issues. So I don't want to say publicly because it, it can change. They've met with JCP and L, they drove around the city with our electrician, Manny in Public Works. We've already had the discussions with George Seela for the electrical permits. We're doing this as fast as we can, but it's, they have the equipment, they're ready to go, their fiber lines are already there. It's just getting some additional approvals.
So is it possible it might be up and running by the time the concerts begin?
When do the concerts start?
Probably not the, probably not the beginning concerts, but by the middle or end.
Okay.
They, they have an ambitious date. They want it up and running as quick as possible. Everything's going to slow down, it's not the city, it's going to be...
It's going to be JCP and L.
JCP and L.
Okay.
And we reached out to JCP and L and Jim Marky...
He's on vacation, but they're aware of it.
Right, to make this happen as quick as possible.
Great.
Moving on to ordinances for introduction, number 25 is business licenses, sale of animals. This bans the, what's becoming popular, puppy mills. 26 is amending traffic and parking regulations. 27 is vacating an unnamed alley on Dunleavy Street. 28, 29, and 30, I would actually like to get into a little bit more discussion. 28 is for new parking meters. 29 is sewer utility improvements, which is just sewer relining and televising and reconstruction as needed. And 30 is for the reconstruction both sewer and road for Heck Street. These are the ones that previously have been mentioned about the local finance board. The process, as you all know, is introduced tonight, local finance board in July. And then I come back with approvals from local finance board, and you can adopt it that night. Those are those three ordinances. For second reading public hearing is ordinance 2722, which, if you recall, we tabled it at the last meeting because we were looking into some auditing aspects of it. This ordinance was from 2009, which bonded for 15.9 million, 15.8 million for improvements along the Springwood Avenue corridor. That project is pretty much done outside of what's been authorized already for increasing the line underneath the railroad tracks at Memorial. From 24 to 18 to 24 inches. That project, we're hopeful to have out to bid shortly, probably by August, and construction starting September, October-ish. This, if there's any money left over, this change will actually allow us to do projects anywhere else in the city. But Spring, this is the last part of Springwood Avenue. We just want to have it just in case we can use it. And then 24, again, amends the traffic regulations for the city. Any questions?
Just one thing. 28, 29, and 30 are bond ordinances. When everybody says bond ordinances and people through, oh, we're borrowing more money, we're going to raise how much we owe. I'm talking to you, we have some bonds coming off this year where these should replace them, and it'll be no tax increase?
I wouldn't say no tax increase until we do all the final refundings. But we've been very careful with our debt authorizations issued and unfunded, issued and funded. So our debt ratio has gone down over the last couple of years as we've been paying it off. Our principal and interest in the budget has gone down. We've done very good with that. There will, there will be something. It might be very small or zero, which is still something, but we'll have all that financial data, you know, as the audit finishes and we go for a little...
But I just want the public to know that as much as we're adding bonds, some old ones are coming off every year, so...
We actually just refinanced about 14, 14 million, and our interest rate was 1.65, which is about three tenths of a point less than what a lot of other places were getting. So we're, our indebtedness is in very, very good shape.
Cindy, yours on 198 liquor licenses?
Mm-hmm.
That question I asked you on page... About the Cameo. Are they still?
No, you're right. I moved them up.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, if you, on the revised resolution, I moved them up to the regular group. You were right.
I don't have a revised, I haven't, but it's somewhere...
But you were right.
Okay, thank you.
Their pocket, yeah.
And for ordinance 24, we're recommending that you vote no on this, so we can make a substantial change to Heck Street. We want to reverse, from listening to some of the residents, the way the one-way reads. So staff is recommending, and as you guys have talked to, some of the residents in the area, to actually vote this down, and we'll redo the ordinance for the next...
Michael, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
So if anybody was here, and I'm going to make that announcement, we did get a petition against Heck Street going one way north to south. And we talked to it about it amongst ourselves and amongst the professionals. So the best way and the only way, because it's a substantial change, we cannot just change it. So we're going to vote no on it, and then reintroduce it next week. So we're going to vote no on it, and then reintroduce it next week as far as what the residents are requesting. So if anybody's here tonight to speak upon this, you can go home. If not, you can speak on it if you want to, but it's going to be voted down, and we're going to listen to the people that submitted the petition. Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question on the same, same ordinance. So the one-way streets that are identified, are they already one-way streets?
Yes, you were mentioning.
So we're not, we're not adding any more one-way streets? Thank goodness.
Heck.
Okay. All right.
All right, you have no other questions. We'll move on to matters by city council.
So I just have a couple announcements. We are going to form a budget committee, and anyone who might be interested in applying to be on that committee can fill out one of the volunteer applications that we have online. And I don't know if you've all seen the beautiful Sunset Avenue footbridge, but there will be ribbon cutting for that on Friday, June 23rd, at four o'clock on the Fifth Avenue side. And also, there will be a public input meeting for the city's master plan on the 20th at seven o'clock in, at the senior centers. Six?
No, not at Springwood Avenue here.
It's here. Oh, sorry. It's not at Springwood Avenue. It's here in council chambers. And that's it.
On Friday night, there will be another expungement session at St. Stephen's Church, so anyone who is interested, please come. On, oh, on the 28th of June, there will be a job fair sponsored by Michael's, and Michael's will be constructing the new Renaissance project on Springwood Avenue. It will be held, we think, here on the, in the morning, but something will be on the city's website giving you specific information as to what time and exactly where it will be held.
Michael, I have a question. Springwood Avenue, clock. Is the fountain on and ready for the summer?
Down to Earth is checking on that. I talked to the project engineer Kirk from Spur yesterday, or Tuesday? Yesterday was Tuesday. They're checking to make sure everything is still proper. As you know, that park hasn't been turned over to us technically. Down to Earth is still in charge of everything, so he's been reaching, trying to get a little endeavor to come in, do the inspections before it gets turned on.
So they will be, they'll try to have it on before the first concert?
Trying to.
When is the first concert again?
First concert is Gary U.S. Bonds on Monday, June 26th.
Little Aster. No?
No, he's not on that one. He's on another one, but not on that one. The schedule should be up on the website of the Asbury Park Music Foundation.
This is me. I'm concerned about the mayor's ball. Do we have a mayor's ball? Are we still going to have one? I was invited to Neptune. I'm saying, "Wait a minute, I have a mayor right here. Why don't I go to that one?" So is there a committee or so?
Because this mayor said, "I'm not wearing a tuxedo," so we had the rodeo for recreation.
Well, what you normally wear, which I think you deserve one.
No, well, I'd rather have the rodeo for recreation. It was, I think everybody liked it because you didn't have to wear a tuxedo. I think everybody had a great time, and we decided not to do it every year because there's so many other people raising money that you can't keep on going to the well every year. So we made enough last year to last two years. So save a date in April of 2018. There will be another rodeo for recreation instead of a mayor's ball.
Very good.
Okay.
This morning, I had the privilege of going to Hope Academy, and they had a talent show. So I just want to give a big shout-out to them. The kids were just beautiful. They did a nice job, and they felt so proud getting up on stage. They have, their graduation is coming Friday, and I wish them all well. I want to talk about recreation a little bit, the committee. Some of the things that we're coming up with and we're still in the process of doing is, it came up that we would like to have a walking club. What is that is, we're going to have volunteers that walk every morning, and if you need a walking partner, that part, you will call that partner or call one of the people that's in charge of the walking club, and they will drive their car over and walk with you around the block or as far as you want to go. There's also recreation signup. You can call Alicia Floyd to that. We also thought about a self-defense class just for females, eight to 80. And we're going to have a presentation eventually. And this instructor, he's well-known. He's from Asbury Park, and there will be a signup for that, and there will be a lot, two demonstrations before you have the opportunity to sign up. I just want to talk personally for a minute. The reason I want to talk personally is because I don't believe that some people know my history, and they keep calling me and asking me various questions about why I'm always in the face, somebody's face, talking to them. Well, I explain it to them, and the majority of people that they talk about is police officers that, in uniform and out of uniform. And the way I went about explaining this is, I taught in, I taught in one, two, three, four school districts. I also coached for twenty, 28 years with various sports. I taught for 28 years, and I coached for 28 years. And I got to know a lot of people from the Monmouth County and Ocean area. And one of the things I used to tell my students or my players is, "I'm here for you now, and I'll be here until I die, so you can always come to me." And they do find me from Freehold, Red Bank, Monmouth Regional, Asbury Park, Neptune. They do have a way of finding me. And so if you see me out there, and twenty-five of them out of that group is police officers. Sometimes they come in their uniforms. Sometimes they come just to talk in their regular, day-to-day clothing. So if you happen to, the people that's concerned, I want them to hear this and know that I'm not going to turn away for something that I love to do. If I can help you, you, or you, I'm going to do it. So that's just, and I thank you for that, listening.
Okay, well, I'll do two then. I'll do, so a week from this Sunday was our 26th annual pride event with selling vendors up 140%, and probably one of our biggest in the last five years. And then last night, I want to thank Ryan Jimenez, who runs the tides, for doing a remembrance ceremony Monday night, June 12th, which was the one-year anniversary to the 49 victims of the Pulse nightclub shooting. So I'm sure, I'm going to guess many of you know June's Pride Month, which is part of the reason some of these events are happening.
On June the second, the 200 Club of Monmouth County had their annual valor awards luncheon, and once again, Asbury Park Police Officers were given commendations. I would just like to read the names of the Asbury Park Police Officers who were given the commendation awards. Captain Guy Thompson, Sergeant Lorenzo Pedaway, Sergeant Camille Walrick, Detective Darius Davis, Detective Gabe Casareco, Detective Steve Rasmur, Detective Cynthia Deos, Officer Frank Sanji, Officer Shanice Wesley, Officer Greg Parisi, Officer Kevin Michael, Officer Michael McDonough, Special Officer James Crawford, Special Officer Anthony Ferrantino, and Officer Carl Christie. And to be recognized by the 200 Club is a great accomplishment because that meant on September 13th, 2016, they were instrumental in arresting people in a stabbing incident, and they took two guns off the street. So again, our Asbury Park Police Department was once again recognized by the 200 Club, so I congratulate them. I thank them, and I thank all of our fine police and fire from that, that's all I have.
Matters by the city attorney? Or, I'm sorry, city manager?
Thank you. As you know, every year, the Department of Justice issues a notice of funding availability for the top priority. Last year, I believe, the city put in an application for three. Over the last week or so, myself, from the police department, Kelso, and Gattiano, and the CFO, have been looking at what we should recommend to Javis to apply for this year. The application is due in July. It doesn't require a resolution. We're bringing this, obviously, for discussion. We are looking at the next three years. There are 15 eligible officers to retire. At least eight have already said that they're going to leave within this ten-year period, within this three-year period, with another two or three possibly on the fence. Those of you who weren't here years ago, it seemed that the city had hired approximately 15 to 20 officers about 20, 25 years ago, which is now, we're hitting that timeframe where they can leave. So we've seen an influx of retirees. There's approximately six this year, and as I just mentioned, up to 15 in the next three years. As a distressed municipality, we are eligible for no local match. Last year, we did not have a local match. So what we're going to recommend is five officers, which again, as a distressed municipality, gives us no local match, which we know will help offset the ease of these people retiring. We know four that have said they're going next year. So this is replacing those four. We still have to maintain the levels, but it will allow us to offset the financial burden of officers leaving. We've been really looking at, along with the Hanning Group that's coming to help the police department do some training, of looking at the long-term planning of this department. And, you know, we're going to be hitting some waves of retirements in the next couple of years. So we, we want to make sure that right now, as we are transitionally, quote-unquote, distressed municipality, we can try to get as much as we can. So with a zero match, and that's pending Department of Justice approval, we can look at hopefully getting five officers. So for the next meeting, we're going to provide over the next couple of days the full-time, the full-cost benefit analysis of what this would be. Right now, all five union contracts sunset ended this year, so it's a little bit difficult to do forecasting because those are going to be up for negotiations. But we'll give you an idea of what this would cost here for these officers that could be leaving the force. But I just wanted to have, you know, a discussion that this is going to be coming next week, and hopefully we can come to some sort of resolution of what the city should be doing. I don't really want to miss an opportunity where we can get some officers for free, especially as we're going to be moving some. While we take this as a staff role.
That's your question, Mike. Do we ever go out to the school system and try to encourage the kids to come back to Asbury, and if they go to college, or maybe to get into law enforcement and come back?
Yes, there's been improvement practices in the past. I can ask Kelso to give a better update of what's happened, but I know police and fire have done a lot of improvement, and we have school resource officers in there for the positive law enforcement role models. But I'll get something next meeting after from both the fire chief and Deputy Chief Kelso about a pass improvement. As you know, you're civil service municipality, so it still is testing procedure, still the score line on the exam. When we look for special ones and special two officers, we always start looking at the city because that gets them, again, into law enforcement to start off with. So that's an easy way to get kids interested in a career law enforcement. But I'll get you something either in the next meeting of whether we're through with it, pass it, pass it.
Thank you.
I talked about that.
Okay, and your previous thing about replacing police officers, that's all fine. I'm all for it and everything. But something like that, could we talk about it? We have a personnel committee. Could we talk about that at the personnel committee meeting first, instead of it just being, "Oh, by the way, here's some news." Okay. I mean, I think there was a purpose to have a personnel committee. Okay, thank you.
Matters by the city attorney?
Yes, just one matter. Yesterday was the advertised due date for submission of proposals in response to the city's RFP, seeking vendors who are interested in operating a concession regarding the rental of paddle boards and kayaks on the Dia Lake. We received two proposals, which are currently under review by the city manager, and we expect that a recommendation will be made for the possibility of an award at the next meeting, if possible.
Okay.
That's it. We'll roll into the regular meeting. I'll do the roll call. Councilmember Chapman, here. Councilmember Clayton. Councilmember Kendall.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Can everybody please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please? Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coastal and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2017, and posted on bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. This time, can I have a motion to open to the public portion of the council meeting, please?
Second.
Anybody who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each member has three minutes to speak.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison. Since my last appearance here, when I asked for Carter-Sackman czar, we have two more proposals that I missed. One was on Emery Street, which is directly around the corner from tonight's proposal. Tonight's proposal is east of the school, and if you ask anybody who works in the school or purple glazed donuts, where are these people going to park? And every answer that you ask the Sackman group, they say, "Well, we're going to build a 600-car parking lot." I don't know whether that's approved. Is it going to be a charge to everybody? Is it going to be free for everybody? Have we used up all 600 spaces already with all the projects? Every time I look around, if you look at that map, which I keep saying, it's Carter-Sackman City. I mean, building, 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 no parking, no parking, no parking. So I just will come up here many times and say, "Are we looking at it? Are we looking at each project, not individually, but in total of what Carter-Sackman is asking for?" So if he's building that 600 park lot, I think he said it was going to take two years. Is he, is he going to be built before it, after it, during it? So it concerns me every time he comes up here with a new project. Again, this is not anti-Carter-Sackman. He's done a wonderful job for the town, but now I'm really concerned with the future. Thank you.
And thank you. And part of the reason I asked him the question about the 607 property was, that was a presentation he made a month or so ago with the green on the buildings and the supermarket, which it sounded like the supermarket's wrong. And I was told by somebody that project was dead. So I don't know if it's dead. I don't know if it's alive. Answer except if it is dead, I don't know why our financial people are looking into it, so I guess it's not dead. Is it, Michael?
He's not provided us with any information. Saying he's not, he hasn't provided any information, asking to claim an amendment, so I think...
And every answer to his projects is they'll be parking in that 600 parking lot.
Right, but should we ask him if he's dead and stop our financial...
He's paying for the financial advisor, so...
Oh, he's, oh, okay.
Yeah, we will pay for that. That's the best way.
Oh, okay, if he, fine.
Until he tells us to stop doing something, we're going to keep doing it.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, he's paying for it, but for some reason, I thought somebody told me that project was dead.
To your point, Robert, though, we absolutely are working on a map with accumulation of development and parking. Michael and Michelle have been working on it, I think, for the last couple of weeks, and we're hoping to have a more comprehensive idea of what's going on downtown by the end of June.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Nancy Kaplan. I live on Dia Lake Drive, 300 Dia Lake Drive, and I'm also a member of the New Jersey State Council of the Humane Society of the United States, and I'm here in support of the bill that's pending relating to puppy mill dogs being sold in town and prohibiting stores from doing that. There are 237 municipalities across the country, including cities, that have banned the sale of puppy mill dogs in their borders, and studies have shown that towns that do this have marked reductions in shelter intakes and euthanizations. So that's a positive, obviously, in terms of costs, um, and certainly from an animal welfare perspective, it's a positive. Um, also wanted to point out that there are a lot of, um, consumer protection issues that have come up, uh, relating to dogs that sell puppies. Um, particularly in Monmouth County, we have two stores, one in Red Bank, one in Middletown, that have continued to buy dogs from suppliers that have numerous animal welfare violations. USDA has cited them for violations like filthy conditions, lack of veterinary care, um, keeping dogs in freezing conditions, and so forth. So I think the bottom line is, we don't wanna have stores in Asbury Park that would sell such animals. Um, we don't wanna ban the idea of stores that sell shelter animals, or give away shelter animals, but we really don't wanna see any store come into this town, um, that would sell puppies. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, the Consumer Protection Bureau of the state is responsible for keeping track of the violations, um, in the stores, because the stores are supposed to post the origin of each animal and consumer protection information, as in the buyer's rights. And a lot of the stores are in violations. It costs us taxpayer money for the, for the state to be monitoring these stores. And I just think, in terms of the values of Asbury Park, I personally don't wanna have stores in town that are selling puppies from puppy mills where the mother and dog, mother and sire dogs are sitting in cages, sometimes filthy cages, sometimes really suffering. We don't need that here. We don't have anybody here now, obviously, but I wouldn't wanna see anybody moving in, so just wanted to speak on behalf of that. Any questions?
No, thank you, and, uh, so I guess we'll be the two hundred thirty-eighth city in America.
I sure hope so.
Well, we will be.
Great. I have information, if anybody wants it, from Humane Society of the US on, on this, this concept. I know it was probably emailed, but I have, would you want me to give you papers?
I think we're good.
Okay.
We're good.
I brought handouts.
Now, yeah, you.
And did you say you lived in Asbury Park on Dill Lake Drive?
I do.
Three hundred Dill Lake Drive.
Oh, wow. I used to live four hundred Dill Lake Drive.
Uh, good evening. My name is Anita Weiner, Madison Avenue, with that man over there. And I also would like to speak about, um, the building and the growth that's going on in Asbury in terms of height. I'm getting the impression that sunlight is going to be taken away, because some of these projects seem to be, wanna be twelve stories high, fifteen stories high, thirteen stories high, and the downtown is beautifully open in terms of light and space. And the more that you allow buildings to go higher and higher, uh, to match what other buildings are there, I just think we're gonna get a really closed-in, dark, depressing feeling in town. So I just want you to be cognizant or aware of what you're allowing to be built and how high it's being allowed to be built. And I do, I am in favor of this complex being a new concept, where there will be housing, parking offices for the council and the city and the police and everything. And I would much rather see a parking lot here than anyplace else in the city, as long as you're not too high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed Baumgarten, seven oh six Fourth Avenue. Uh, it might be a little too late, I'm just wondering about this, but I, I'm here basically, uh, in support of the council, in terms of they are trying to be proactive with the rental, the part-time and, uh, temporary rentals that are going on. Uh, I think, uh, being proactive to, towards that, especially in light of Airbnb, is a good thing. And again, I am here in support of, of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What, what are you doing tomorrow night at seven?
Yeah, I know.
On record.
You are. That's funny.
Thank you.
Gary Maffay. I've lived on, uh, Locust Drive. The past fifteen years, I've owned a home there, and I've recently moved to six oh one Madison. Um, usually, when I, when I speak, I like to have all my facts and figures. Um, however, in this instance, when I heard the Verizon Wi, free Wi-Fi proposal, it seemed to be fast-tracked, so I just wanted to have a couple of comments. When that's been done in other jurisdiction, the free Wi-Fi is terrific. But when they put it on a street pole on a busy corner with a TV screen and a plug-in to juice up your phone, recharge your phone, mobs tend to form around them. And on Friday and Saturday night around twelve, one, two, it, it might get very, very congested, if, that if, that's what they're doing. I don't know. Uh, they're not.
No, it's no, it's on the, where the, where the fiber lines are on the poles. There, there's no electric, no, nothing ground level, no mops, it's all in the air.
Sure.
It's in the right way, in the airspace.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Council. Louise Murray, sixteen oh four Grand Avenue. Resolution two hundred and two. Uh, authorizing the purchase of a four-wheel ATV.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little bit?
Louise, you have to speak up. We can't hear you.
Why? Hello? You can't hear me yet, still?
A little bit better, but, yeah, okay.
What happened? I, all right, I'll talk louder.
There you go, perfect.
Um, the resolution two oh two for the purchase of a four-wheel ATV for the police department. Michael, I think you said for the beach. Could you please elaborate on that? I mean, why would they be going on the beach?
For rescues, um, for criminal activity. We've had a couple instances.
We already have them on the beach, don't we, currently?
We have it for the lifeguards.
Yeah.
For the police.
They don't have SARs, they don't have.
Yes, for police, you need to have a special package with the light packages the mayor has mentioned. Um, this is for protection of the people who visit the beach. Uh, we've had some issues in the past. Uh, we're trying to be proactive with it. The, the ATVs that are currently there, the deputy mayor mentioned, are specific for the lifeguards, which carry the lifeguard.
Right.
Um, this is something that we feel we need now, and as we continue to grow, it'll allow us to better perform in the future, for safety.
We've got four months of summer, and I just think that, 'cause I'm very pro-police, I think you could best use that money to make sure everybody's wearing a vest. I mean, that's my opinion, because how did we do it in the past? I mean, if somebody got hurt on the beach, you called in the fire department, or you called in whatever. I, I just don't, I don't know why that would be necessary to be operated on the beach, is my point. That's all.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Springwood Avenue. Uh, the Verizon, uh, just a little bit more information. The Obama administration actually worked on getting, uh, free Wi-Fi in urban areas. So actually, being on Springwood Avenue is a great plus. I asked the, I, I mean, uh, interface, would they actually put Wi-Fi in a park? Because it would also help in programming, bring people out to sit there, to do work, to have other activities. Now, for it to be on Springwood, uh, in an urban area, you know, it gives other people opportunities to find, you know, go on the internet, find, uh, jobs, do other access, so I think it's a great plus. Uh, we did a great job at the beach this, this weekend. I got a chance to spend most of the weekend down there, but it was, it was excellent. We made a lot of money, and I'm enjoying it. Second, I'd like to ask, I submitted a letter to the council about the RCA program and the abandoned properties, and I just wanted to follow up as to what the extent and how we can get this accomplished, and what do we need to do. Also, I'm understanding with the RCA program, we have allocated units that are still out, that need to be out. Are we keeping a record, and what is the actual record of those, of those properties?
Michael? Concerning the Wi-Fi at Springwood Park, that was actually a part of phase one. Um, but it was abandoned by the city just due to the cost. Um, at that point in time, we couldn't find a service provider, and the ones that would were gonna be overly expensive, as the mayor had mentioned, and I don't know if you've been to the time. But when we met with Verizon, we asked them to extend it to there, they didn't have a problem with that. So, yeah, it was part of the, the first part, but it was too expensive. Um, thank you for your comments on the beach. Concerning the RCA program, we're auditing it. We've had, we've heard the same rumors, we've heard the same concern. Uh, all ordinances are zeroed out in our financial system. Um, as part of the, uh, housing plan that we're doing, we're auditing that again, uh, just to make sure that everything is copacetic and that all the units have been done. Once that plan is done, if there's gonna be a public comment, we're gonna be here to bail. But we're auditing to double-check and make sure everything's there. All the ordinances are, are zeroed out in the end, so financial, which means that everything's done, but we're double-checking everything as part of it, so we'll do that. So once we get, once we know, we know.
Well, actually, I mean, I have the records that actually show when the deposits were made. I got a report from the city as to, and I'll give you extensively how, that the city was obligated to a hundred and two units. I got a report from, uh, the city that says forty-seven were done. And that equates to the amount of money that's still available, that says you actually still owe fifty-three units. I mean, everything matches up, so, I mean, it's not even EMTs coming in. But if you pull the records from the actual deposit dates, and you keep a record of everything that transacts and out of it, it still shows you have the money, and the person doing the program says you have forty-seven units done.
That's why we're.
So you're missed, so you're missing fifty-three, but the, the math adds up. You're missing.
The internal controls over the years seems to have been spotty, not on Kerry's part at all.
No, no, I'm just saying, but.
That, we're seeing the same things now as we work through this, which leads to all the questions that we're auditing this now. Because I have so much using concerns you do, is some things don't seem to be adding up. Um, Kerry's paperwork is phenomenal. But we're, we're triple-checking this, because there seems to be something amiss, um, or amiss with some record-keeping elsewhere, especially in the.
Well, elsewhere, it actually shows that it's there. It's not, it doesn't show actually not, not missing. I don't know who's saying you don't have any more obligation. I'm saying the paperwork shows you do have obligation. The money's there. The money has been shown by three different reports, and the actual cost analysis as to what you paid out, it goes, I have it all right here. It shows everything matches up, so you do have the obligation and the money to do it. And we can actually put this with the abandoned property and, and do these obligations.
Okay, I, I think part of the problem that I misunderstood. For some reason, I was led to believe all the obligations were filled, and we had this two-point-whatever million dollars sitting there. And that would have opened up to use the money for a pilot program to take and rehab houses and to start that. And then we were told at the last mi, meeting, there could be obligations not filled, and that's why we have.
It was discussed in closed session, so I'd be very careful about what you say in the one second, because there might be legal issues with this.
Okay.
So I can stop talking now.
Okay.
There was a miscommu, there, maybe there, there was a miscommunication.
I'm saying, we, the. Okay, Tracy, you're, you're, you're three minutes up, and I'm trying to think how I'm gonna reply to Michael's stuff. I should probably just shut up and talk to him.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Lori Ross, Long Branch Avenue, Long Branch. I'm here, uh, as a visitor and a volunteer, uh, in the city of Asbury Park, and I'm concerned about, uh, of course, the high crime rate, the violence, and in particular, the shooting. So I have a number of questions, um, based on my concerns regarding my safety, the safety of the family, and certainly the safety of the children. In light of the articles that are in the Asbury Park Press, and as noted by esteemed Superior Court Judge Richard English, he called the west side of Asbury Park a war zone. He said between the guns and the heroin in Asbury Park, it's killing the west side of the city. It does have to stop. I have said this publicly, I have said this privately. I have a real concern for not just my life and my safety, but the safety of everyone in the city. So I'm kinda surprised that there was nothing really in the paper about the number of shootings. Now, because I'm a visitor and a volunteer in the impacted area, to my knowledge, I've been told anecdotally, just with regards to the shootings, there have been five. Um, I know that the prosecutor's office is involved, and we've heard that, uh, they have been visiting the west side of town to try to combat that crime, but I wanna know on the record, how many shootings have occurred in the city within the last sixty to ninety days? What steps has the city taken to improve public safety, particularly in the impacted areas of the shooting? And why has the public not been notified of these shootings? And what safety initiatives, programs, and messaging has gone out to the people that live, work, worship, and visit here? There is a concern. Um, and again, it's wonderful that you're the coolest city. I happen to love the beach. I happen to go, when I get an opportunity, I like to, you know, spend my money in the town, town business district. There's a real concern about the shootings in the west side. And I don't know why the messaging is not going out to the public, so could somebody answer that?
I don't, I cannot give you the information today as far as how many shootings. It'll be looked into, and you'll be given the information in a reasonable timeframe. I'm not gonna say forty-eight hours, because I, I don't know how you retrieve this. Uh, now.
What has been done in terms of the messaging, Mayor, and any public safety, any tips, any helpful tips?
The only thing that I think I was not paying attention, when you began with Judge English.
His comments in the Asbury Park Press.
His comments were going back to the shootings from two thousand thirteen.
But I, I can tell you.
His comments were not addressing two thousand seventeen. Our crime rate has dropped dramatically from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. Are we good? Yes. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. But, De, don't, don't, his comments were about the shooting.
The past, is what you're saying. It's not present day, so everything is fine.
No, no.
There's no heroin epidemic in the city.
I'm saying you're taking Judge English's comments from a trial going on in Freo now, going back to two thousand thirteen, where people are being investigated and being charged with, and admitting back then it was the Wild West.
But Mayor, you had a young girl, fifteen years old, that was shot on June first of this year.
I said it's better, I didn't say it's perfect, and I said we're trying to make it perfect. And I don't know any place, be it Rumsen, Dill, be it Allenhurst, where crime is perfect in any community.
I'm just asking for help, and what we can do to notify the public.
The numbers as soon as possible. Next week.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Not that this makes a difference, but I think it's Judge Oxley, not Judge English.
No, it was English.
Oh, is it English? Okay. Okay, oh, uh, then I could be wrong.
It was in today's paper.
You know, it's been on the Asbury Park Press every, every day for the last week.
Yeah, it has to do with the.
Hi, Rita Miranda, Eighth Avenue. Well, on my way here tonight, I, uh, saw the poor sale sign that I talked about two weeks ago. It's as big as a car. It's on Asbury and Main, and the dumpsters still there. Uh, that's two things. And the other thing, as I called today to the city manager for the beach report and the parking report for the week, and also, I, I have a, a problem with the police department that don't know the ordinances. We had cars parked on our street, trucks, huge ones. One was parked party line. That truck was so big that it knocked a tree over on Grand Avenue. But the cop wouldn't put a ticket on it. He said it was legal, and that he was doing business in town late at night. They don't even know that commercial vehicles can't park in a residential neighborhood after dark, or overnight. And I had an incident next door to me. The van was from Allenhurst. He had a pickup truck with a lift, and he had another car on the lift for three days. Called the police. Well, once I called the ship commander, he told me to call nine-one-one. I said, why would I call nine-one-one? But that was the emergency number. He said, that's who you have to call. Okay, so I called, and I did what I had to do. Finally, I found out that the vehicle on my street was from Allenhurst, and I was fuming. I called the Allenhurst police. They said, well, that vehicle is not allowed on our streets. I said, well, they're also not allowed on our streets. So, I mean, let the police drive around with an ordinance book, so they know. They're young, and they're. They're young and they're new, and they don't listen to the old timers because they think they know everything. But, I mean, everybody knows you can't have a commercial vehicle on the street at night, overnight. There's one right now on Grand Avenue with ladders on top of it between Seventh and Eighth. That'll be there all night. Nobody will touch it. They park in the yellow zone. Nobody gives them a ticket. I was in Bradley Beach. I was a foot into the yellow zone and I almost got a ticket the other day. They had, you know, not even a foot. It was a couple of inches. And he said, no, no, you, I'm glad you're here, because he was gonna give me a ticket for just being there. So why can't they be more alert? I mean, like, how come we have to be alert and see these big signs and see the dumpsters? I mean, something has to be done. And the other thing about hiring fifteen, you, I, uh, Michael, did you say fifteen police officers are retiring?
In the next three years, that's, that's how many are eligible to retire, I anticipate.
So, why don't you hire part-time? This way you don't have to pay benefits instead of spending six million dollars on that health plan every year. That's how much it is. Six million dollars. One benefit. I mean, you're gonna start thinking fiscal. You can't keep buying and, and paying out all these huge amounts of money. I mean, maybe if you got real fiscal, then you could be social, but first you gotta be fiscal. So, beach revenue, parking revenue?
Uh, the four sign in the dumpsters, I'm sorry, the sun's right in your face. Um, the four, the four sale sign in the dumpsters, we issued corrective action notices. They didn't comply, obviously, as you're sitting here complaining about it. And we've been issuing them summonses. I spoke to Code this morning about it because I saw it, the mayor saw it, you've seen it. They haven't done anything, so they're getting summoned. Um, the beach and parking, that's a monthly report that comes out from the department heads, so we'll have that in early July. Um, we don't do weekly reports with it. The police issue for the truck, yep, police department screwed that up. Um, detective, Deputy Chief Kelso came and saw me on Monday, said that you would talk to him. And he said, yep, the officer was wrong, that car should have been ticketed. And, you know, he, he said he apologized and, you know, we, we screwed that one up.
Yeah, he was very nice.
Um, the truck issue, I didn't quite follow you, so after the meeting, stopped by to see me, and, but that was it. I can't see it.
They got, they knocked down a young tree on, on Grand Avenue.
I'll get the police report. I'll talk to, to Kelso about it because I, this is first I'm hearing about it, but I'll talk to Kelso and see about the tree.
Okay. And the other thing is, I agree with Louise about the truck. I don't think you need that truck.
Okay, thank you, Rita. And Rita, when something happens, like you said about the truck from Allenhurst and everything?
Yeah.
If you call that day, it helps us, it, I don't know if that's the one where you called the shift operator.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay. Then do me a favor. Don't wait until Wednesday to come to a council meeting. Call Michael or call, you can call me and I'll call Michael on Monday. Because we can ask the police department to go back and play the tapes and see what was done wrong and how we can correct it. Obviously, something was done wrong, and the quicker we get to it, and you're, you're right, mistakes are made. Quicker we, we find out about them, quicker we can correct them.
Well, I don't like to bother the council on weekends. I, I don't think it's right.
But, but it, but. And I appreciate that, but it's quicker, like, we can get the information. I can shoot Michael an email. Believe me, he responds to me and I'm sure to the rest of the council, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And.
I do sleep.
Uh, well, sometimes, but I, I have no problem trying to wake him up if it's something important. But the quicker he gets it, the quicker he can ask Deputy Chief Kelso to get him the information so we can correct it. So it doesn't go on for three days. And, and thank you, and I agree with you.
Just call John, Rita.
Yeah, yeah, hey, Rita calls me. I, I, I love talking to Rita. She, she. If you're, love talking to, uh, Rita also. Okay, Jerry?
Hello, Council and, and Mayor, Jerry Scrannall Longway. Um, listen, I had to hear about that truck and trailer every day. And she was gonna call you, and she didn't wanna call you. She kept thinking, should I? And I said, no, because we thought the police department would handle it. Okay, Michael, thanks for going over those ordinances that we, uh, are coming up. That was really good. Um, oh, by the way, guy, you did a fantastic job with the Memorial, Memorial Day services, moving it inside. But maybe we could have a public announcement, because the more people told us, they would have went if they knew it was inside. They didn't know, they kinda sorta got canceled. I said, why would they cancel that? But they didn't know it was in the armory and then it tied to church, so that could be announced. Um, last night I had the pleasure to come to the zoning board meeting. And the guy doing a, a renovation or a new building on five hundred Eighth Avenue did the presentation. It was the best presentation I ever saw in this room. All presentations should be done to that caliber, and this is just one house. We have people doing ten million dollar job that don't put the effort that that guy did on a five hundred thousand dollar renovation. You really need to see that presentation. He did three D dimension drawing that you don't need a model. They were perfect scale. I just wanted you to see that. Um, there's something wrong in the beachfront. People walk crossing the street, don't even stop at the curb. They walk right in the street expecting the car to stop short for them. Someone should be giving tickets to pedestrians that don't have enough common sense to stop before they do cross the crosswalk. I mean, it's offensive driving down there. Um, what's the latest? I'd like to know the latest outcome for the Holy Spirit condo. Are we gonna make money on the deal? I would like to know about that. Um, when's Convention Hall gonna be restore, restored? I'd like to have that answer, or, or talk about that. Um, when you're given a date, like, when you say the date, um, six-twenty, uh, by the way, thank you for the Budget Committee, whoever was pushing that along, thank you. Say the day, because most people think by day, I'll have a meeting next Wednesday. Like, I don't know the date for next Wednesday or next Monday, but I do know Wednesday or Thursday when I'm doing something. So if you could say that, that'd be helpful. Oh, could you add this to the master plan since you're working on it? I like to see a timeline so we know what's going on, because everything, prices are hot, real estate's hot in Asbury Park. But if the building site between Third and Fourth, Kingsley and Ocean stumbles, there's a lot of people who are gonna be sore losers about paying high prices for houses. Houses are going on the market and they're getting multiple offers in the first couple of days. It all depends on that one building. We need a timeline to say when it's gonna be done. So when people talk real estate, this building is expected to be done in two years or whatever. We need something like that to help people. And then, um, listen, I, I gotta be careful how I say this because I don't wanna get phone calls. We need fashion police. There's no reason for people to be walking on Kingsley and Heck Street in bikini. You don't see that even in South Beach, three blocks from the ocean, people wearing underwear on the street. There, I don't know how you're gonna fix broken, but there's something wrong. I haven't seen Speedos, but I would have looked, but I haven't seen them. But I do see bikini and string top. Something's wrong. And I don't know how you're gonna fix it. And then other people are telling Rita.
But that's what I'm gonna say, your three minutes are up.
Uh, no, but one more thing. Um, Michelle McGuire was telling Rita on Eighth Avenue. She witnessed people empty out the strollers and put the garbage in the gutter in front of her house. And good thing she caught him. He picked it up and apologized and put it in a garbage can. There has to be people walking around saying, oh, you did that? Here's a nice ticket, fifty dollars. Thank you for coming to Asbury Park. Okay, so could you answer some of my questions about the Holy Spirit?
A couple of them.
And, and Convention Hall?
Vet- Veterans Day, that's, you know.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. That, that was an iffy day, should it be, shouldn't be. And the one is run by the fire department, so it is a city event. The other one is more by Harold Dale. He posts thirteen thirty-three. At both locations, uh, officer was stationed there to tell anybody who showed up that they were moved inside. So we did think about that. Kevin took care of the.
You did a great job.
Yeah. Uh, firemen's and Frank made sure somebody was at the V F, uh, the park, Memorial Park, to tell people that it's been moved inside. So we did try to do that. Convention Hall, they're working on it.
But is there a deadline, timetable?
No, there is no ti- no, in the two thousand and two agreement, there was no deadline, no timetable, no bonds, no anything for thirty years. So they're working on it. Uh, as far as, I think you're referring to the eleven oh one project, the hotel.
We used to call it the Esperanza, but I don't know what they're gonna call it now.
We're gonna call it eleven oh one, and there was a pre-construction meeting today where, towards the end of the month, they're gonna be moving in a gigantic crane to start the work. So work is proceeding there. Uh, and it's gonna be a two to three day to put this crane in place. It takes three big cranes to put this gigantic crane in place, so.
Well, size is important.
Okay, and, that's all the answers I have for you. Because I forget the rest of your questions.
Well, I can jump in with regard to the, uh.
Well, what about the walking, people not stopping on the sidewalk, right off into the street down at the beachfront? They don't even stop.
Okay. With regard, Jerry, to the Holy Spirit Church, which is the ten oh three Bond Street easement request, that matter is still under review by the council. If and when a determination is made, um, there will be an ordinance and it'll be a, a public matter. That'll be on the agenda in future. But right now, it's still under review.
Okay, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hi, Ernest McNolly, four hundred Del Lake Drive, Asbury Park. I'm wondering if I become a Realtor in Long Branch, if I'll get extra time?
Most, don't waste it now. Don't, don't, don't waste it wondering.
I know, I know you're pretty fastidious with my time, but I notice.
Don't, don't waste it wondering.
I wonder if I become a Long Branch Realtor and I come here, you'll give me an extra three, four, five minutes?
Uh, it wasn't three or four.
No, I, I, I'm well aware of my time.
Okay, Ernest.
Trust me, I'm trying to make a larger point here.
Okay.
Okay, I, look, I'm willing my time.
You're wasting your time.
I'm not wasting my time. Sometimes silence is more important.
Okay.
I made a very cogent point there. I like to know why some people from out of town seem to get a lot more time, a lot more congeniality, and a lot more concern when I'm living in the sandtender, a building where we can't control our fire system. The management company is operating out of a potentially illegal home in, in, uh, in Asbury. Uh, staffed by two owners. One is on the planning board, one's on the zoning board. I have to be the one to find out that they don't have proper permits. Memorial Day weekend, we have fire alarms and then things going off and no management and no response. And, uh, if you read about the London fires today, unfortunately, the alarm systems didn't work well because construction, very similar to sandtender, a lot of breakdowns. Uh, and of course, confusion amongst the people living there. They're told to stay in their unit, uh, by mistake. We all, we all know what happened. Uh, we've had a fire alarm because the supers failed to turn the boiler off. It set the fire alarm off, and then the supers were seen telling people, stay in their apartments. So we're all endangered. I have people calling me, my neighbors, saying they had to go to the hospital on Memorial Day weekend. They weren't getting any response from management. Five days later, we got a response from the most prolific management company in Asbury, Townsmen. They responded five days later, saying that, relax, don't worry, everything's under control. So in my forty-two seconds left, I'd like to point out the fact that I find it interesting that a, a city manager, when questioned about major projects and can, can say, I don't know if it's alive or dead. Uh, I also think it's interesting that we have a city manager from a small town who's a experienced there, but yet to come to a large city like this and to actually run the police department concerns me. I, I don't know what city manager, Capabianco's acumen is to run a police department as troubled as Asbury. And in the last seven seconds, the statistics about Asbury Park have not gotten better. They're actually tragic in terms of violence and murders and crime, by FBI statistics.
Ernest, if, if you wanna use another fifteen seconds?
No, 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 I'm, I, I just wanted to say my piece. I don't really.
Hello, everyone. I wanna thank for the rapid response about First Avenue. Thank you very much.
Your name, Monarch, please, I'm sorry.
Oh, four oh five First Avenue, uh, Calvin Anderson. Um, I, I, I walked in, you were talking about the, um, police jobs, the cadet, um, I was wondering, I heard a little bit of it, if you would consider, um, running like a cadet program out of the high school so that the kids at the high school can get a chance to become police officers and to encourage them to, um, you know, get into law enforcement. You know, um, connect with the school board and, um, you know, make some things happen for those kids that live here in the community. Um, I also wanna talk about the Del Monte, uh, on First Avenue. We have a lot of drug activity coming out of there. And, um, the fire department is called there all the time. Are they being charged for, when the fire department comes? You know, I think it's a hundred and, uh, twenty times that they showed up there. I may be a little bit off. But, um, anytime that the school pulls an alarm, they have to pay and go to court and pay for it. So I wanna make sure that they're paying also when all these false alarms are taking place. But thank you for the rapid response for First Avenue. I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the police department does run a cadet program, cor- correct?
I believe so.
Yes, yes, they still do. So let us find out. I forget which officers, I wanna say Officer McGowester, but I'm not positive.
Well, like a, on a job training plan, I think would be pretty nice.
Okay, well, we'll see if we can expand it. And, uh, as far as the Del Monte, I'm gonna say a couple of weeks ago, we got a complaint about it in both, all, all departments, uh, fire, code. Everybody was down there doing a thorough investigation as far as making sure everything was, is done properly. So we, we are aware of the, some of the problems there, there are being looked at.
And with the Del Monte, the state kicked us out. The state has jurisdiction over the inspections. It told our code enforcement department to leave. We didn't, but they told us to leave.
And so when they pull the fire department, they pay for, you know, if that fire department's on, I'm not sure.
They are, I see that there's a report that gets sent up to me. So it tracks everyone who's had it. So if they, they're over the number, they get some.
And the number's three, so they're over the number. Yes, sir.
My name is Richard McLaughlin, and I'm not a local, I'm just part-time here. I have a house on fourteen oh seven Bond Street. And I got sent here by my wife to peel me away from the television, I guess. So here I am speaking. I can't believe it. But anyway, uh, particularly, she loves that bridge that we're right by Sunset there. That's unbelievable. If you've walked across it since it's finished, it's beautiful. And to sit out there on those benches and then the swans go by. So my wife loves the swan. She also loves history besides nature, so she thinks swans are a big part of the history of Asbury Park. And they are impressive. They're really beautiful. So, uh, in fact, a couple summers ago, there was, there were some black swans on the lake. I don't know if you ever saw them, but I think there's a doctor up there who had some exotic Australian swans. And it was like a hundred degrees, and there was a lot of debris at the end of the lake there, and there was a dead swan in the middle of it. And it was fetid, it was awful. My wife said, you get in there and get it. We're not gonna, that's not the right thing. So I had to go and I get some tools and I finally fished it out and buried it on the front lawn. That made her happy anyway. So why am I telling you this? It's just. So, okay, part of the history of, uh, uh, these swans are part of the history. Another thing, and especially after what Councilman Kendall talked about, the walking club, um, um, it's getting a little tougher to get around these days. But I like to go fishing. And there used to be a, a fishing club apparently in Asbury. And if you go into Frank's Deli or a lot of other places, you see the swans, you see the fishing club. And, uh, I was just wondering if there's any consideration or any thought of putting something together, public-private thing or fishing club to, to get involved, or I've got an idea or two that could make it very inexpensive. Just, just a thought, that's all. I'd love to see that, because I just don't like to walk out on those jetties anymore. Of course, I'd like to find a nice, quiet place to go fishing. Okay. Uh, oh, okay, so the, the black swans and the lake being fetid, how about an aerator at that end of the town? To clean that end of the pond up. It really is pretty, last summer it was really pretty bad. You could almost walk on it. I don't know what it's gonna be like this year, and I really appreciate that bridge. It's beautiful. It'd really enhance. I really appreciate that bridge. It's beautiful. He'd really enhance that park overly. Do a great job. We just love this town. Huh?
Ninety percent paid for by Sandy. Just, I'm just saying, when you say it's a million dollars, let's be clear, ninety percent of it was paid for by Sandy.
Let's not take up the gentleman's time. Go ahead, sir.
That's, that's terrific that you were able to do that and with some public money. That's fantastic. That'll add a lot. That a lot, adds a lot to the town. And so, um, so how about a fishing club for us guys that have a hard time getting around but like to fish? Is one idea. I, I, if I could volunteer helping anywhere, I'd love to. By the way, I'm from Bergen County, so, but I'm down here fairly often. And, and, um, that's a, that's about it. There are just a few points I wanted to make. I understand there's a community garden around here somewhere, right back here. I'd like to see that. People like nature and things like that. And, uh, I think you guys do a great job. I really appreciate it. Love this town. Thank you.
Thank you and, uh, thank your wife for throwing you out of the house tonight. Uh, there is an Asbury Park Fishing Club. It's the oldest saltwater fishing club in the nation. It goes back to nineteen oh two. I, after the meeting, I'll give you the president's name of it. They meet monthly. They're mostly ocean fishing.
Yes.
But they do sponsor tournaments in Deal Lake, and they've sponsored fishing tournaments through, uh, with Debbie DeLissa. So I'll give you that information and.
I did, I go, I did go, she also said you gotta join the fishing club, so.
Well, you don't have to join to go fishing. All you, all you better do if you go fishing in that lake is get a license. Because I know people who've gotten tickets because it's not for Asbury Park, but the game ward is drive around looking just to give out tickets. If you're fishing in Deal Lake, Wesley Lake, or Sunset Lake.
A lot of nature down here, it's true.
Yes. And we're hoping the lake, because Eileen's taking charge of a commission to make that lake as pretty as possible. And we don't go through what we went through.
Can they stop fishing so forth? They're, they do that already, they stop fishing?
So it's a little bit shallow.
We're trying to kill the algae before we put more fish in there. Two years ago, we bought white perch, and we had to get the D, DEP permit to put them in there to eat the algae. And I think somebody caught all the white perch because the algae kept on growing.
Really?
Yeah, so. But there are fish in there, and I appreciate everything.
It's cousin of the striped bass, by the way.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, Joey Pilato is the president of the fishing club, and I will give you a number if you'd like to get in touch with him.
And just, just so you know, Sunset Lake was treated for algae. It's gotten an algae treatment, and there'll be two additional algae treatments in there. It's a little bit too shallow on the western end for an aerator right now.
Oh, it is?
And, um, we're working with the Urban Coast Institute at Monmouth University and with the Monmouth County Health Department to clean and maintain that lake. And actually, uh, we just spoke with the Audubon Society about perhaps creating some wildlife refuges on those little islands.
Are you guys all in with the swans so far? I understand they can overproduce, but, but, uh, I mean, as we.
So far, so far, so good.
And we'll see at the grand opening on the twentieth?
Friday at four. Is the grand opening, I mean, we're all, the bridge is open, but we're doing like a little grand opening of the.
A ribbon cut.
Next Friday, four o'clock.
Next Friday at four o'clock?
Come to the bridge.
Is it next Friday or this Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, four o'clock.
On the Fifth Avenue side of the bridge. Thank you. Motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
We'll move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. We have executive session minutes of May twenty-fourth. We have workshop minutes of May twenty-fourth, and we have regular meeting minutes of May twenty-fourth. Have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Resolution two thousand seventeen one eighty-six, resolution approving special event applications. Two thousand seventeen one eighty-seven, resolution, the city of Asbury Park making an application, New Jersey Local Finance Board pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon three dash one at SEC and previous approvals listed board. Two thousand seventeen dash one eighty-eight, resolution approving disposition of surplus property. Resolution two thousand seventeen one eighty-nine, resolution requesting permission for the dedication of rider for revenues derived from donations required by NJSA forty-eight colon five dash twenty-nine. Two thousand fif- seventeen dash one ninety, endorsing the submissions of the two thousand sixteen recycling tonnage grant application. Resolution two thousand seventeen one ninety-two, resolution of the city of Asbury Park releasing performance bond for two oh four, two oh nine Bond Street and accepting maintenance guarantee. Two thousand seventeen one ninety-four, resolution approving disposition of surplus property with no value. And resolution two thousand seventeen dash one ninety-five, rejecting requests for proposals for the turf club soil removal project. Does anybody wish any of those resolutions were removed off the consent agenda? Hearing non, have a motion to approve second consent agenda, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen one ninety-six, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for two thousand seventeen budget. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one ninety-seven, resolution approving the payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase order seventeen dash zero one five six nine. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one ninety-eight, resolution approving two thousand seventeen dash two thousand eighteen liquor license renewal, renewals. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
She said, any comments and questions? She talked to us and, no.
No, forget it. The open public comment period is now closed.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one ninety-nine, resolution establishing a mayor's wellness committee in and of the city of Asbury Park. The following people are, uh, listed on the resolution for approval tonight. Mayor John Moore, for, and all the terms expire twelve thirty-one seventeen. Mayor John Moore, the city manager or his designee, Lisa Lee, Wendy Glassman, Jesse Ricks, Allison Circo, Dr. Leslie Castellini, and Lena Sequie. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two hundred, resolution appointing housing authority, appointment to the housing authority. The following member is being reappointed, Carol Torrey. Expiration date, April twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Ca- uh, Kendall?
Question first. Who are the people again?
Carol Torre.
Yes.
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 Councilmember Quinn and Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh one, resolution terminating contract with Munichap. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second, third.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen two oh two, resolution authorizing the purchase of a four-wheel ATV for a police department. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh three, resolution authorizing agreement for financial and administrative services. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh four, authorizing design services, project management, and construction and inspection services to T and M Associates for improvements to sanitary sewer line under Heck Street. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Comment? Michael, we're gonna notify, um, the people prior to the work, both putting signs up and in their mailbox?
Uh, not in their mailbox. They'll get it at their door.
Okay.
Can't put things.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay.
Any more comments? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh five, authorizing professional services contract to T and M Associates to prepare the municipal public access plan for the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash two oh six, authorizing the execution of a right-of-way use agreement between the city of Asbury Park and Verizon. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to ordinances introduction. Two thousand seventeen dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending and supplementing section four dash one, business licenses by adding subsection four dash one point ten, sale of animals, a chapter four general licensing of the code of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance will be held on June twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending traffic and parking regulations, chapter seven, sections eleven and sixteen. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance will be held on June twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, vacating an unnamed alleyway measuring fifteen feet wide, located east of Dunlue Street and block eighteen oh one, and shown on sheet eighteen of the official tax map of the city of Asbury Park. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance will be held on June twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight, bond ordinance providing for various parking utility improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey appropriating one million five hundred thousand, therefore in authorizing issuance of one million five hundred thousand in bonds or notes to finance a car cost per, cost thereof. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance will be held on July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-nine, bond ordinance providing for various sewer utility improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey appropriating five hundred thousand, therefore in authorizing issuance of five hundred thousand in bonds and notes to finance a cost of the part thereof. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Okay.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for this ordinance for July twenties, I'm sorry, July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty, bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey appropriating one million six hundred and fifty thousand, therefore, including grant expected to be received by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, an amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and eight dollars, and authorizing the issuance of one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, bonds or notes, in the city to finance a cost of the part thereof. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing on this ordinance will be held on July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. We're on second reading public hearing, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two, bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number twenty-nine ten, which provides for sanitary and storm sewer improvements, hereby finally adopted by the city council, the city of Asbury Park and County of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, on June third, two thousand nine, to amend description set forth therein. Have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public, please?
Move it.
Second. Anybody like to be heard?
Twenty-two, two oh.
The first one.
The bond, the bond ordinance.
Nothing. It's changing the description.
There's no change in money. It doesn't cost the city a penny.
Does it? Why does that, any change?
It does not cost the city a penny.
But this is from right, right?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't we do that already?
That's, explain it, Michael. Please.
In two thousand nine, the city issued about fifteen point nine million dollars in bonds to redo the infrastructure along Springwood Avenue. There's money left over. The final part of it is underneath the railroad tracks. It goes from twenty-four inches and eighteen inches to twenty-four inches on sewer line, sanitary sewer line. So we're fixing that.